President of the United States, Parliament. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thirty-fourth, may I go through the paper roll top for us, please?
Martha Williams. Brady, here. David, here.
Here.
Here. Our study session this evening is to discuss the budget for 2024. So at this time, I'll turn it over to City Manager Snyder and Director Clark.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So tonight we will, or before you are the proposed, is the proposed budget for all of our general fund, all of the departments that fall within our general fund. So that's kind of the bulk of our budget. I've also provided a memo that kind of highlights any significant changes within each of the departments. And then there are also individual department reports from the department heads that provide just a little bit more explanation on what they, what is also included in their budgets and plans for next year. So it's pretty straightforward. I will say there aren't too many significant changes with the general fund at this point, but I will kind of hand it over to Director Clark. And then we will go through each department, highlight any major changes. I think he'll go over what we anticipate or estimate that will end at for this current year and then what we've proposed for next year. And then we'll also allow you all to ask any questions and we'll just have a kind of a discussion about the general fund. We are planning to bring the remaining funds that make up the city's budget for to do a same type of work session on October 23rd. So that will include all of our enterprise funds, our road funds, special revenues. Yep. And then we will be set to, I think we're on track to hold the formal public hearing at our first November meeting and then adopt the budget, our second meeting in November. However, if things come up, we'll have to adjust our schedule, but we're, we're ahead of where we usually are with the budget. So I'm very pleased with that. And I applaud and thank all of our department heads and staff, especially Director Clark and his finance staff for really getting us to this point. So I will hand it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Well, I'd like to say that I think the general fund between 2023 and 2024, well, I'll open the numbers here like David said, but I really had a good feeling about the general fund. It came in about five hundred and fifty thousand better to the side than I thought it would, that I budgeted. But I'll, I'll do everything. And he did a nice job highlighting some of the information for the general fund. So I might do it together for the members. So we're doing the same format. And if you have any questions, I'll do my best to try to answer them. If you don't mind, I can do this. So we can just think a while. And if you know what he just said, so I'll try to. So the report that I've got for you, of course, is for the general fund. The first column is 2021 activity. The second column is 2022 activity, 2022 activity. The third column is the budget that we had for 2023. The fourth column is up through nine months. These are actual numbers up through nine months for 2023. And then the fifth column is where we project them to be at the end of the year. Of course, these can be solid numbers, you know, because the fact that we're going to be close based on the prior nine months activity. And then the final column that I highlighted for you is the actual 2024 budget that we're requesting. So to get started, on top there are major revenues for the general fund. I do have, if you look all the way down to about the third part of the rest of the session below that little bit, I budgeted for four million six forty-nine. And I believe that we're going to come in at four million eight eighty-six. Four fifty-eight and budget for next year is four thousand nine sixty-eight, six oh five. Some of the items that I would like to highlight up on top, and I'll go by the line items. The reason that we're roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars higher than what I budgeted for. We'll start with the, there'll be an interest on taxes. I budgeted for twenty-five thousand. Account four forty-five. I budgeted for twenty-five thousand. I think we put in about forty-eight thousand. Probably taxes, a lot of it comes in during the winter, tax collection. And for next year, I'm going to budget fifty thousand. So that brings up about twenty-three thousand. The other item I want to look at is account four fifty-two oh one, which is franchise fees, two percent. I budgeted for eighteen thousand, but that came in a little bit lower. At eighty-one thousand, I don't know what that's going to be at between the state. The other thing that I budgeted for was the marijuana license grower. It has been a little higher in the past, but I budgeted, and that is account four eighty-eight. I budgeted for sixty-five, but that came in lower at twenty thousand. And then account five twenty-eight, which is federal grants other. I budgeted for fifty-one, four thirty, but we did do some of the ARPA money for 2023. And that's about two hundred and eighty thousand, one thirty-five, or two hundred and one thirty-eight. And for next year, we're going to use up the rest of the ARPA money. That's going to be about two hundred thousand. That ARPA money for next year is going to help pay for the fire shop. And hopefully they're approved by council for the cameras that the public safety has been asking for. And also, in account five seventy-three, the local community stabilization from the state. I budgeted two hundred thousand, that's going to come in at two twenty-six, so that's going to be higher. And the other thing that did come in was account six six, which charges for six hundred. I budgeted for twenty-five, and adding the outside services for that, so I think it's zero. And then finally, the general fund revenues, account six sixty-five, for interest on our investments. I budgeted for sixty thousand, but I think we're going to come in about a hundred thousand in the next year, probably a hundred ten. So overall revenues that I budgeted for were four thousand six forty-nine. They came in about four thousand eight eighty-six, and for next year, it's going to be four thousand nine sixty-eight.
Four million.
Or excuse me, I'm sorry, four million nine sixty-eight, six oh five.
David, if I can just add something, I just want to highlight the, the ARPA funds that we received that's really helped kind of stabilize our general fund, because I know when we presented this year's budget last year, you, we anticipated over half a day going out towards the two projects that we had. There was a delay with the North Albion Street Bridge project, so not, we did not, we have not spent as much as we anticipated. But really having that, those ARPA funds to kind of cover or, yeah, replace lost revenue has really helped us stabilize and maintain a healthy fund balance. Or general fund, I should say.
So those are the revenues for the general fund. Then I'll go to the department.
No pay raises for us.
I budgeted for thirty-five thousand seven forty, fifteen then, at forty-four thousand six ninety-five. I conjecture, the main reason is for the, and who's involved in the contract services for the investigation of employees of the city. That's really the only main difference there. That came in pretty good that year. I budgeted for thirty-five thousand one forty-five. So basically about the same without the initial ten thousand contract services. City manager, Department one seventy-two, I budgeted for two thirty-eight thousand five fifty-five, came in way lower than that. The main reason was, I expected to come in at one twenty-five, one twenty-four, under twenty-five thousand thirty-four. So the main reasons, I figured for salaries and wages, that was about half of what I budgeted. Seven, six hundred in that apartment hospital, hospitalization insurance. I budgeted for forty-five seven, but of course it came in a lot more because of Peter's lower. We came in at nine, nineteen thousand five fifteen. And then, of course, the other one was the and contribution to the merger, where wages and of course that came in lower, I budgeted ten thousand eight twenty. And then five thousand nine thirteen. So that will be helpful. And that's a lot of savings of about a hundred thirteen thousand dollars.
Excuse me, is that, is the reason that, that this has been, it seems like a cutting of forty percent? That's because the salary and wages are distributed over multiple accounts and that's why we're, okay, because I remember a number of years ago, we decided to go one way and say, city manager's salary is going to go right here. And then there'll be stuff that's moved over. Now we're switching it back the other way.
Yes, and not for everybody. So mine is a portion, I want to say twenty-five percent of my salary is included under the HR budget. Previous years, the salaries and wages were higher because we did have the assistant city manager as well.
That's right.
So their wages were split between the eight, the city manager budget as well as the HR budget. But now since only a portion of mine, that's what that is.
Thanks.
But I think I'm a lot better. The next one is the assessing department. I budgeted fifty-two thousand six thirty, and I think nine thirty, there's a kind of a huge difference. Next year, I budgeted for fifty-two fifty. One's changed on that, and get higher outside. Company that you all are assessing and their contract is in there. I do have a footnote on that. Last year, we were supposed to put twenty-three to paying four thousand dollars a month. The new contract we had, it's going to rise about two hundred and twenty-one dollars. So it's going to be four thousand three twenty-one. But so far, I do a great job. We helped with a lot. We cleaned up a lot of properties. It doesn't sound certain. They don't do the board review, and so far, they've done a great job. So. So that didn't come in too much, but then what was budgeted. Department is mid-thirty. I budgeted sixteen thousand, eighteen, nineteen, thirty, so that's within. I do a number of a hundred and five thousand. There's a big amount, eight oh five. All harness, all burn. I'm not sure what that's going to do yet, but in and out of stuff that we decided we had to buy out. What the contract is, I guess, for every year. So that didn't come in too much, I think, as well as budgeted. Clerk, revenues we budgeted for five hundred, fifteen then, at thirteen-six, I think there's some game for us, there's some election that you had. Next year, that's going to go a little bit more, because I think you're having a little bit more elections to their input. It's going to be higher. So that helped out a little bit. You can get, oh, expenses for the clerk, I have already been one thirty-seven, six fifty, including that one forty-three. Next year, I budgeted for two fourteen, two fifty-five. That'll be just going to be more, it's going to be additional elections.
Can I just add one point to that? So we do have three, anticipate three elections for next year. And anytime it's an election year, the deputy clerk treasurer position, we split that salary fifty-fifty between the finance office and the clerk's office. So when it's an off year for elections, more, the split is greater on the finance side, because more time is spent in that department as opposed to an election year where the clerk's office is very busy and they'll be very busy with the three elections. And then if you look at the part-time wages, yep, that's up because that accounts for the election inspectors, the wages to pay them to work the elections. And then we're up for the two-year certification training. So we'll be paying them to go to train as well. So that's, you'll see an increase of that also.
So that's, that's just all under the salaries and wages? There's no, oh, there it is.
It is, it's seven oh three, I'm sorry.
Oh. Did, will we get state money for the early elections? I mean, is anything coming in for that, since it's a state initiative?
Well, they, like, are creating a lot of equipment. Or a portion of the election workers' pay, probably and stuff.
Really don't see it in our budget. Okay.
We didn't have to, yes, and we budgeted the full amount that the county gave us and that we had.
Okay.
We're not going to get any, because we don't know what that number is. Everybody's telling.
So we'll be good.
Yeah, yes, they will shut down that. That will definitely help, yeah.
But they'll let us know before the end of the calendar year, correct, or no?
Well, we also, they extended, they extended the date.
Oh, did they?
For people to continue to apply for the grants.
Wow.
So they extended out the, we see everybody's, we're giving you an additional few weeks. You know, so they have not funded anything yet.
So say we're waiting upstate.
No, that never happens.
Okay, so that's those dollars. So, six, I think that was forty-six, three hundred and five, that's way up this year, I think because of the stadium. Maybe wages in the HR department that come in. So that came in a hundred and forty-six, two point four, but we did have a huge drop in the city managers department. So overall, they made a perfect budget. The overall budget, much for the general fund. Next year, I we had budgeted for a hundred and forty-eight, six fifty. So the main reason that, it's on for the actual, because of the extra dollars that's before the finesse officers, the finesse department. I budgeted for five hundred and ninety-seven at the top. Over to five, I think we're going to come in at five to four one seven. The main reason there is for the juice value and the benefits associated with it. I was without, that'd be for three, four months, so I have to, to. Other than that, it's just about the same. Next year, I budgeted for five seventy-five, three oh five, that's mainly for the three percent increase for salaries and increase for the contract and just negotiated. Arm two sixty-five, middle eight. I budgeted for nine thousand eight sixty, eighteen, nineteen, two thirteen. Not much of a difference there. Next year, I budgeted for ninety-one, six nine.
Wait, you wanted to.
Two seventy-six, Department two seventy-third, St. Jerry. I budgeted for sixty-eight thousand, we got in seven thousand five hundred. Next year, I budgeted for seventy-three, so that was pretty close on the board there. The expenses for the cemetery. I budgeted for two sixty-one, one, two, I missed today, three fifty-three. Pretty close, a couple of items, mainly just for increase in the rental. This is now nine forty-three. I have a lot of equipment on, on the fifth and T one, targets all together, on some of the equipment usage. And the usage apparently of the subject of objects here. So, but I'm coming out, it's been a four year crowd. Great. So that was pretty good. Next year, I like seven, three five, one eight seven, fifteen now. Well, not too much of a major difference, basically, salaries. And then this annual honor. Department three oh four. I budgeted for twenty-five thousand during the year we moved, we made a change, the chain made. These revenues used to be shown in Department four twenty-two, but they really shouldn't be shown in real board. So next, the expenses that relate to them. So I budgeted for twenty-five, we actually got two thousand and then, next year, I budgeted for seventy-five thousand. You see that when we look at Department four twenty-two, the revenues are down a little bit because the switch to a different product to manage. About the expenses for Department three oh four, I budgeted for a hundred and four thousand eight sixty-five. It came in at one seventeen, one seventy-nine. The main difference is a count eight oh two for contracted services. I budgeted for five, and they came in about thirty-two five. And next year, I go for the point seven five. So a total loss, Department I budgeted for seventy-nine, eight sixty-five, I came in at fifty-five, one seventy-nine loss. So that's about twenty-four thousand two hundred. And then next year, I budgeted for thirty-nine thousand nine ninety, loss. So we got, we got the expenses. We got it, it's a total force. The market three oh four. Very part of three seventy-five, and they run inside a little more time. Last year, we budgeted for revenue, we budgeted for a hundred and thirteen, two hundred. We're going to come in at two ninety-five, one seventy, I'm on page eight or fifteen now, at the bottom of the total revenues. Yeah, I think we're going to come in at two ninety-five, one seventy. The main reason is that I was seven, eight seven, five hundred. I don't think it's the twenty-five thousand, but Scott thinks he's going to get one eighty-seven, nine, seven hundred and ninety. He's waiting for the first, next, so I'm going to have to, I don't know. Next year, we're going to be for four ninety-nine, three ninety, and I understand grand will get paid for the fire. Put a note on the top page. We need to meet team then, what they are. So our total of revenues again, in the ninety-five, I went for one for two hundred of the main revenues, so the better one. Grant money that Scott added to the, so, right. Okay, the expenses for the public credit. I budgeted for two million, four hundred and fourteen thousand, three sixty-five. I think we're going to come in at two thousand four twenty-nine, six K three. That's not a huge difference. We know that stands out there based on what we've budgeted. Next year, it's a little different. We're budgeting for three million, two fifteen, five oh six, but if you look at account ninety-one, on page nineteen, or nine of fifteen now, at the top of page, get the line down vehicles. Put note, the first of the new vehicles each year is in two-three, and then for two twenty-four, the fire shop is going to cost five hundred and seventy thousand, but we aren't getting a grant for almost a hundred dollars or less than that that I talked about earlier. So for the year, this year, Department three forty-five had a negative after revenues, that's about two thousand. Or I budgeted for two thousand three oh one, one sixty-five. We're going to have a negative two thousand, two million, four thousand, four hundred and seventy-three. So that is about a hundred and sixty, a little under a hundred and sixty dollars, a hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred. Next year, I'm going to, a loss in two thousand six fourteen.
A million.
Two million, six hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars. And that's mainly for the increase in salaries and the benefits that are associated with it. Most, most of the things that we've gained, uh, I just feel like you're our plan zoning, point twenty-two. This is where the revenue will lower, and I thought about it here. I thought it was like fifteen thousand, it was going to come in about eighty thousand, the other thirty-five thousand showed up in three oh four, that's a, that we made. Revenue was, that came in one hundred and thirty-one, excuse me, I budgeted for one hundred and thirty-one five. And we received a hundred and six, one seventy. And next year, I have to stay on a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. That's the total enforcement of that. Not the expenses that relate to that apartment. I budgeted for two hundred and sixty thousand since twenty-three. And we're going to begin at about two forty-nine, five point seven. Next year, I like two hundred and fifty-nine, three point five. And so our total loss, I thought it was a hundred and twenty-nine, one twenty-three, we ended up at three, three fifty-seven. Next year, I'm just looking at one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three twenty-five loss.
And I just want to note one thing for this department. So they will have a new revenue source for the rental certification fees that we that go along with the rental certification ordinance that was adopted, so.
I know what I'm looking forward to, city maintenance. I budgeted for seventy-seven, I mean, five, I'll explain that at fifty-two, eight eighty-five. Next year, I request fifty-one, twenty, or fifty-one thousand, three twenty. Three, I'm going to page eleven, fifteen now, each one always. The main difference, uh, in two thousand, next year, two, I'm on page ten, fifteen now, for that. I'll deal three, some of that services. I voted for a hundred, we came in at only a two-ten. And I have a dollar, nine oh three equipment rental. I budgeted for ten thousand, only came in at five thousand two. With that, a thousand dollars, probably fifteen thousand dollars savings there, bottom line for the city manager's department. Department four forty-four is tree training. I budgeted for eighty-four thousand six ten, one of the number pages, eleven, eighteen now. I budgeted for eighty-four thousand six ten, going to come in at fifty thousand eight sixty-seven. That's saving of about eighty-six thousand. Twenty-seven thousand. Next year, I'm going to budget for sixty-two thousand eight ninety-five. The main difference in the lower, but the expenses is account eight oh two, contract services. The city management, the tree training, entry rule, right up there for that. I budgeted for sixty-five thousand, coming in about two two six. And next year, Kevin suggested that I show the forty-five thousand, that is to a new benefit that'd be higher, and then, Troy.
Yep.
That's all our tree work now.
Yep.
We don't use our western area. Well, that's going to be next year, the savings for the year, I'm budgeting for sixty-two thousand eight ninety-five. I, four forty-seven, is engineering. And the expenses we expect next year, basically, what, two, for, what's going to be, I'd like fifteen thousand for professional services. It's going to come in about ten thousand four hundred. The total that I put there, four fifty thousand, it's going to come in about ten thousand five hundred. So that's going to be a save of forty-five hundred for twenty twenty-four, the twenty-five thousand is still a damn study that you are doing, and also the expense that you, and that's a base. Forty-eight, the street lighting. I budgeted for a little, one seventy-five, forty-three, one sixty. But maybe then next year, I'm going to work on it. Twelve fifteen. Yeah, twelve fifteen.
Landfill.
We came landfill. I budgeted for eighty-five thousand dollars.
Five hundred dollars.
It was, uh, so you can come in at four thousand four fifty-four, which is about half of what I budgeted, basically. And for twenty twenty-four, I budgeted for five thousand. And for twenty twenty four, I lived in five thousand. Well, that's what was saved there. Uh, Audi River Trail, uh, apartment seven fifty eight. I didn't vote for anything last year, we did have some activity. I think we're gonna come in for contracted services. Uh, for next year, we have a project out, uh, working on it right there, please. Or, I'll be river trail based two project, we're gonna stay sending thirty five thousand this year for. Next year, you can stay ten thousand, I think the project is gonna be done in twenty twenty five.
Yes, I just a comment, David, we may want to, because we did receive the three hundred thousand dollar state grant. And so that's a reimbursable grant, so meaning we. Cover the cost upfront and then we have to submit for reimbursements. So we may want to add something in, I don't know if you want to put the full three hundred thousand. For next year, um, because the bulk of the. Project will take place in twenty twenty five, but I think we could add something under the state grants in revenues.
Uh, your job, um, seven fifty eight, so that year. I will add some revenue to that, so basically, basically be a wash.
Yeah.
Um, now we're down in parks. Seven seventy five. I voted, um, came in at three thousand nine thirty eight. Last year we got a big project, uh, the empty. In our Spark grant commission, uh, the Matta Top Art Based Two Project. The project is basically gonna cost a million dollars, but we're gonna get a grant for all of it. We anticipate also to be done in twenty twenty four. And, uh, so I have a space to do now. I had five thousand dollars for work, it's, uh. Services, uh, first for services, and our sort of overall revenue, five thousand for next year. Our standard. For the parks. Four hundred and three, I voted for six, three hundred and sixty thousand, four thirty six. It came in at four thousand ten, four ten. The main reason is account eight oh one, it's thirteen fifteen. I voted for fifty one, four thirty. But we, uh. Uh, I mean, passion number is gonna be eighty two, one thirty five. There's a footnote under that, which means twenty four, it's a fifty thousand, create a penis for the engineering. These for the Matta Top, one of those you have a project. Below that, eight oh two, this is the shut in boss. Plus an additional five thousand for the normal contract services that we do for the parks. So, uh, it's basically if you had a nine thirty five, that's sixty six, two oh eight. Uh, that's gonna get you to your million dollars and then rent is gonna part of that one. And then put one more, uh, very, I wanna, uh, look at here. In the, uh, art seven seventy five department. Uh, the rental, nine forty three, that did come up with a higher than what it is. I voted twenty thousand, I came in at thirty thousand five hundred. So the professional services and the rental, boy, that is, is the additional fifty thousand, higher, etc. That year, we anticipate a million, three twenty five, six ninety three, of course, that includes that million dollar project. And we, uh, lost, uh, let, for the, for the next year, so it'll be three hundred and twenty thousand, six ninety three. Seven seventy, um, part. The own revenue, we have a maintenance claim, where I think I'm showing the door or something over there, I hope they don't leave. The best, she has the revenues. Uh, the expenses, it was too material. Inside that, how far, they came off as twenty eight, hundred dollars, I didn't believe it. So with the reimbursement and the twenty hundred dollars expenses, we were doing the good. Out of the three thousand, six forty five for the twenty twenty three. I haven't done anything for that year. Unless, oh, uh, this why. All right, I think ninety five is maintenance. Uh, I voted for two eighty nine, two fifty, and ended at two seventy five, by eighteen. Um, next year I have a budget for two eighty, one, one thirty. And, uh, there's a list of. Some projects that we call me to very soon here, so they're kind of active services. But, uh, there's probably a huge difference there, they come with that budget. So when we look at the total general fund. Um, transfer and, uh, very. Um, yeah, the style takes that off, take out the power, fire, drag, rip, or stall. So when we look at the total, oh, and the other thing I wanna. Uh, is department nine sixty five, which are transfers out. When I first was in this, we were giving two hundred and five thousand to the street improvement fund to help with the more value in the Hanger Road project. After taking some of the revenues. For Arpa money. I was, I only had to transfer forty four thousand, one thirty, so that really helped the general fund out. And so in the four fifty for the, uh, street improvement fund, you'll see, um, the difference between the two oh five and the forty four thousand. As a grant for our money inside of there. So I didn't have to spend so much, I wanted to use the. I had to be anticipated, we did our budget. So. Down the box. Over revenues, we're gonna add it for. For the general fund, five million thirteen thousand, nine fifty. We actually, I think we're gonna end up at five million, four hundred and sixty six thousand, four eighty one. And then, uh. Revenue or the expenses, I voted for five million, five thirty four, one fifty. I think we're gonna come in at five, like, three hundred and one, two sixty. Which is gonna put us in the top of the general funds per year, twenty twenty three. Instead of a five hundred and twenty thousand dollar loss. Everybody. Next year I voted for six million, eight, eight, nine, oh ninety five. And my revenues, I voted for, are, I explicitly directed for seven million, one forty seven, four, three to nine. So I anticipate a loss, if we get this, that is forty four. But. I'm trying to budget higher instead of lower, just like I did for twenty twenty three. I'm gonna come out there and plan budgeted for. So as long as nothing comes up that's major in this year, okay, we can do that or better.
Yeah, and I, I'm happy to see, because they expanded that, the final role for ARPA fund, so now you essentially, you can use it for, um. Was it capital? Yeah, and so that helped us a lot, because. When we presented that twenty twenty three, we anticipated transferring out over a half a million from. The general fund to cover our two projects, but we were able to utilize ARPA funds to cover that, so the general fund did not take. That big of a hit, and I just want to applaud all of the other departments for being mindful of their budgets, because a lot have. Come under what we budgeted for and just. Um, how many grants we were able to secure to cover the costs for a lot of things.
Councilman Fred.
Um, and, and just a final note, well done, um, the fund balance, uh, that is left after. The proposed budget leaves us at twenty four point seven percent, which is well within. Where we needed to be, somewhere with above fifteen, less than thirty, so. So we got, we got some breathing still, which is great.
We do, and I know it's not, we've had a higher percentage of fund balance, but I think we have taken an approach to actually. Move forward with a lot of infrastructure projects and other things that we've had to rely on having that on balance, but we. I, I would agree, I think we're, we're in a good place, but we also have. A lot of improvements that could come up that we need to utilize that for, so we just, we want to be mindful of when.
Yeah.
We start spending.
Um, just a couple of other things, and like we'll discuss, I'm just the French, um. I thought our general fund came out really well, hopefully these project numbers will work out, and we'll be some of the folks in that. But I've been doing this for quite a while, I'm still out of townships and villages. And when I first showed up in the city, I was really impressed with the amount of. Idle cash that the city had, it wasn't all being invested like it should have been. But the city has a lot of cash, um, not to say that we have to spend it, but they're in a good place, let's say. And the other thing I wanted to point out was, the city really doesn't have a lot of debt. This year we paid off land contract, or the, I think it was for a building, the garage building that we bought from the county.
Yeah.
Years ago, that's completely paid off now. They also figured out the backer truck that we purchased, allow that, that completely paid off. So as of right now, the only debt aside from the new bonds that we put out, the wastewater project. We have the two thousand nine billion authority bonds. Still to pay, I think we have, we'll keep it slow, the principal is two hundred and eighty five thousand. And then interest down the road is gonna be fifty five thousand. And then the other loan that we have, so the two ten, go limited equity bonds. That has a principal down to right now of a hundred and fifty five thousand, and the interest payment of fourteen thousand eight hundred. So as of right now, aside from the bonds that we just put out. We owe four hundred and forty thousand principal and interest, and those are paid off, seventy thousand. So as far as the city whole, that's pretty, that's pretty good.
Really good.
The city really doesn't have a lot of debt, which is always good. And then, excuse me, one other thing. If we go back to account one oh one, eight ninety five, we go to the last, second to the last.
Is that eight ninety five?
Yeah, uh.
Yeah.
In that number. And the past is always fifty thousand dollars. This was for demolition of the union steel, our four request. We only have one more payment of fifty thousand on that, so after twenty twenty four, you can drop that number by fifty thousand. And so I think it was a hundred and four thousand, everybody did for, and then it could be about nine thousand after twenty twenty four. That's the stuff that we're paying overtime, you know, and then.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's it. So all in all, you know, as a treasurer, finance director, uh, that general fund looks pretty good, if we can, anytime your general fund can end up in a positive. For the year, um, you do things by way. There's a lot of big departments inside that general fund, and you never know what's gonna happen. So try it, so a, try to budget for, but. So far, I think the city's done a good job of spending what we had budgeted, and maybe even a little bit of us to that. So, like Haley said. Most of the departments, they come to me, AI, just like Jeff, he sent me an email today, and that's something I gotta fix, I gotta go here. And so I look at the budget, I say, yeah, just bring your little there, as long as it's under fifteen thousand, we'll go by, you know, if we need it, we need it, that's what we're about to do for, so. But I think. From five hundred thousand to the better side, the general fund for twenty twenty three is awesome, so. Kind of eight and nine, and I give all the department heads, but people working other than, uh, I'm completely.
And if we're honest, the, the ARPA really, really did help us though with that. Um, especially when they expanded the use of those funds, um, because before we were limited on what we could use, but now that we could. Put them towards some of the projects that we have, that's really helped maintain a good. General fund, and I just want to say, I applaud your efforts, um, since you came on board for. Taking some of that idle cash that we have and investing it, because. We're allowed to do, we can do that, and it's really helped. A lot of different funds for, for the city.
Like I'm invested in crazy stuff, there's only certain things that I've invested. They're mostly fixed, they're mostly backed by the government or other communities of galaxies. So it's, it's not something that we're gonna lose unless USA goes down in this day. So, uh, I try to spread it out, I'm looking at some CDs right now, and I'm, you can send to me. They're, they're eighteen month, they're almost six percent, so.
I got, I got that.
I wouldn't sign all that off, I guess, you, but something they have, and you may be the most.
Right.
So, we can, as well.
From you. Well, I'm sorry, not so late, this.
Uh, I know this is very minor, but as we were going through, uh, the various departments, I just noticed the. Hospitalization insurance and basically healthcare has basically doubled in some of the, well, between. Twenty twenty one and twenty twenty, uh, three, is that a trend you think is going to stabilize now?
Um, the health insurance, those are every single period, I mean, it just does. It, um, you know, I can answer a lot of those questions, the salary and the, this whole, uh. So any questions on that, I can always get, you know, come into a board meeting or whatever, or council meeting next time, I'll try to explain. How that has, anyway.
It's honestly, we, we don't know until we receive our, when we meet with our account rep and they provide us with. Our, what is it, premium for the next, for the next year, I will say for this year, we saw an increase, I think we had a thirteen percent increase. Um, for our premium costs, and then for next year, I think it's gone down a little bit, so sometimes it, it just, it fluctuates from year to year, so. Honestly, we don't know until we, so we sit down, and we usually do that. Was it September, August, September, we meet with Mike Tim Q, he brings up, bring up, shows us what our proposed rates will be for the, the next year. And then we start working with finance to. To implement that.
Just wondered if the trends go, of course, is going upward every place else, but I just wanted it.
Yeah.
So the biggest increase was twenty twenty two.
Yeah. And we cast, although I turned it down. But it may, building a two different plan.
Okay. Yes.
You heard the country's one.
So, happy to answer any questions or feedback or.
Do we have any questions for others, manager, slider, or director?
I, I, I think Councilman Reed and I remember the days. Two thousand and ten, two thousand and twelve, when these meetings would take three hours. So we appreciate the new way that accounting is being done, simplifies it for reporting so that we can understand it without having to sort of like. Get into the weeds, so again, I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
I mean, you, you just can't go report out here like this to say, well, this is what the general fund did this month, like, for.
Yeah.
Great. Correct.
I think some of the members, she didn't quite understand how that all took together from the end, but, so, that for example.
Right.
Are we gonna get.
You've done, you've done a great job.
You will. We, we've moved away from the big binder, so they're spiral bound.
Ooh.
Um, but yeah, so I hope this memo is helpful, because it does highlight, like, the significant changes within each department. Um, if you have questions or if you're unsure, contact us, we're happy to, if you want to sit down. Uh, even more and go over anything, let us know, we're happy to do that, um. So we will bring the remaining funds to council to go over, um. October twenty third, so, coming up.
And I'll do the same for that, though, definitely, on, I, that's, maybe one of those accounts. And it was huge, like I said, I like, on a mass, so we guys know that it's down, it's up.
Yeah, yeah, we'll provide you with another memo to highlight any of the significant changes, a lot of it's gonna be within probably our, um. A lot of Jeff's departments, but with the wastewater treatment plant project, and then the proposed water projects as well, so. Good things are being done, and I just want to say thank you to all. Good things are being done, and I just want to say thank you to all of the, um, team members that joined us today, and all the work that you do each day to. Get us to this point, so that we have a smooth, smooth process and a healthy, a healthy budget, or a good budget, I should say.
We have any, um, public comments from McGowan? All right, do we have any council over comments?
Tab, well done.
Right, do I have a?
So moved.
Support, to that, you had, and I, there's, but. All the players say aye.
Aye.
Post, meeting adjourned, six fifty-five PM, thank you all.
Great seeing you all, you, you guys take care.